I think Daddy is dead, he's a dad to me. And I think that, that all my comrades down here, I think that, so it's love to be a thank you dad.
I'd like to thank Dad for saving us from going to jail. I'd like to thank Dad for saving my mom from cancer. I'd like to thank Dad for saving me from falling off a track, please, and busting my head open.
I'd like to thank Dad for saving my birth from being shot. I'd like to thank Dad for, um, saving me from getting hit by a truck. I'd like to thank Dad, because if he weren't for Lynette, we wouldn't be here, thank you Dad.
Thank Dad, because a long time ago, the dump truck was coming from the boat, and had some food on it, and tipped over on the side of the road, and, and we only lost a couple bags of flour and paint. I thank Dad, nobody got hurt, thank you Dad.
I send me from FMS, and I thank Dad for being a daddy to you.
The accident that I had, a couple of days ago, I fell by the washer chair, which would have cracked my kneecap, but it did not, when I fell down, it kind of stung and stiffened my legs for a little bit. And after that, I got up and I went on my way. So I want to thank Dad, he keeps doing great things for us, thank you.
In that situation, and I think we leave it just that way, children should not ask if anyone's, is dead, for there is indeed no death, and someone, the daughter seems to want to block that out. And that's what we would be privileged to allow her to do. And if that's the case, that's the way we believe it. So, um, no child is to ask if anybody is dead, no matter who. None dead, none dead in the true sense of the word. So I want that clearly understood. I would, uh, Bessie Dixon, you make some lover suggestions about the name of the road. Where is Bessie Dixon? I want to get, Mr. Allah. You just think you're more important than you are. Why don't you realize that you're not even more important? Why don't you look at these precious black people? Why don't you turn around and look at them? Why don't you think you have a right in life? Maybe your mother will die soon, you keep this up and she will. You think you're better because you think you're more important, because you got a mother that'll take you in? These blacks have lost their mothers and their dads. And I have lost mine, because of some of the likes of this kind of carryons on. You think you got a place to go to? You won't have a place to go to. So you have a thought you want to go back to the States? It makes you commit suicide? I have thoughts I want to die every second, that wouldn't make me commit suicide. I wouldn't hurt a soul, I wouldn't do that to a soul, not a soul. I don't want to hurt people. Why do you want to hurt people for?
I don't want to hurt them, I just...
No, you did, you were doing something, you obviously knew it would hurt them. Do you love your mother?
Yes.
Well, you didn't very much out there, if you tried to kill yourself, what do you, how do you think she's going to react to that? What do you think that would do for her? You're a very selfish person, do you know that?
Uh, yes.
Hmm?
Yes, I do.
Then why don't you just recognize that you're selfish, and quit it? Or if you can't quit it, just go on work.
I just can't, it's in control of my mind, it's...
You can control your hands to work, can't you? What is it? That's true, you work fast, huh? What's the difference whether you forget or not? Why do you have a right to, whether you do forget or you don't forget? What's the difference? You're nothing more important than any of the rest of us. We have to go on doing what we're doing. Because it's, it hurts too many people. If we didn't have this place, every young man here will face what Chris did. They're mostly black, and many of them that are white would face that. What a hell of a life. To be preyed on, how many times Chris has been shot? How many times have drugged him in that church and treated him, in the middle of the night, and risked going to jail for him? Not over this matter. He wouldn't have had it, over this matter, it wouldn't have been because of us, if he'd listened to me. But just his own foolishness, how many times he was drugging that church, you, some of you were there, you'd see the doors shut, and see us going from place to place, treating his wounds, because we didn't dare go, let him go to the police, because he was doing things that he shouldn't be doing? That's how much I love, how much I care. Always in difficulty, because you come on the wrong side of the track. Any black person gets a shaft, they get in trouble by living. Tried to get a job, he was ambitious and intelligent to get a job, and, uh, couldn't hold a job legally, couldn't hold one, couldn't hold a job, always raised prejudice, he was too intelligent to take that, and too proud, and too rebellious. He couldn't stand that kind of, that pressure. Trump had a very good poem that touched me, as I was reading the dozens and hundreds of letters, this day and all night, about Chris, you should have been black. You wouldn't take the privilege of suicide, you should have been black. You wouldn't take so much time worrying about yourself, if you were a nigger like us. You'd know that's what you expect. It's better at least to not have to worry who's going to come on your back and stab you, who are going to paralyze you? Yes, yes, yes. Why don't you come off with all this whiteness? Do you like pain?
No. Not at all.
Well, don't you take a cutlass, it's going to cause you some pain?
Well, it's probably a lot, uh, shorter than pain I'm going through every day. The mental pain.
You don't, do you believe your mind's going to exist on beyond here? Communists or atheists believe me now, they don't believe in occultism, and metaphysics, and astrology, or any other of these kinds of religious sciences, they don't believe in that. But they are very much, very much concerned about the fact that mind does not have an existence confined to this body. And they want to get advanced, study in that field, and the only time they ever, ever deported and arrested first, a newsman, the Los Angeles Times, uh, news representative, in Moscow, they were getting, he was getting into their parapsychological studies, into the dimension of what was happening with mind, that the Soviets were doing with mind. And they rested his ass, and those communist atheists threw him in jail in nothing flat, and had his ass, they deprogrammed him, and had him until he didn't know his first or last name, and be sure that his brain was cleared of any information he had, and back he went. Now, there've been people who got close to their missiles, there've been people who got close to their scientific discoveries that are far advanced than the United States, but thank you, you may rest, rest, rest. But this was just a man who got close to some studies in their mind discoveries. Very, 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 very convincing to me, that if you didn't see all the things that I've seen, which make me believe, make me believe, I don't believe in loving order, but I believe that there's a curse of immortality. I saw it with the Pearson woman, give birth to a child of a woman who committed suicide, and I said she'd come back as a man, and she'd be deserted by her parent, and her mother, and exactly that's what happened. And you were there, you were probably there.
Yes, I was there.
So you think you're going to stop pain by one act of killing yourself?
Well, I just wanted to get out of a particular situation.
You think good situations are all that bad, eh? How many situations in the world you think are worse than this? I can take you to places in Chicago that would be far from you, that are much worse than this. After the needle man, after they got you down and jabbed you full of, every time you took a walk home from your job, and hooked you on heroin, then finally you'd have to buy it, and go through the horror of withdrawal, never know whether you're going to get down the street without being castrated, as I told you, eight, was it? In Portland, Oregon, a school, a white school, eight boys castrated in one day? Nobody bothering you, molesting you, hurting you, you're getting to eat, you have shelter, you're not cold, Chicago gets ablyserdly cold. People are amazing to me. Inability to think, your inability to, you're able to be quite selfish, quite selfish, but your total inability to think how it could be so much worse. You're conditioned to go back, because that's your brain, you've been programmed like a robot, you're going to have thoughts to go back, that's all you knew. Have you ever considered the blessings of this place? Did you hear what I read from Carol Dennis today? Did any of you, you idiots that were always causing this trouble? Did you hear what Carol Dennis wrote?
Yes, I did, Dad.
Well, how'd that take, she's white, how'd that, how did you reflect on what she said?
Well, I'm grateful for, um, people to find happiness and contentment here, and I'm happy that that's the case. Sorry, but it just hasn't been working for me.
Do you know why it doesn't work for you? I am tired, tired of 25 years of selfish sons of bitches like you. Looking at the lights of you make me sick. And yet I'd love you enough to die for you. Tonight you had a medical emergency, I'd break my body to carry you through the jungle to get your treatment, but goddamn you, I'm sorry, you say, this poor white man says he's sorry, that he is so inconvenienced by this place. You're glad for that poor white bitch, whose contentment evidently she found, but you're superior to her, you're a little higher than her, you're not a communist, you're an elitist, you're a fucking miserable capitalist, you're a stench in the nostrils, you should be shot, I suggest that. How do you react to that? Not, not shot like you want, shot through the hip. Shot through the hip, so you can lay. Lay and suffer and feel, because you know no pain, you're a protected bigot. A spoiled child of middle-class petty bourgeoisie. You're an elitist, you're a goddamnable stench, and yet I love you enough to live for you, you're miserable. And all the other fuckers, wake up bitch!
I agree, he says it's true, alright.
Through the hips. So you can lay, so you can feel pain, you who feel you have so much pain. You who never suffered for nobody, or give a goddamn about anybody, or wouldn't lift a finger to save one of us. You should know pain, and I know a million ways to give it to you, it's a good thing I'm a loving savior. You better respond, because you will, we'll get you out of your goddamn petty bourgeois silence, we'll bring you out of your fucking protective shell, and your goddamn capitalist scheme, your mental, emotional insanity, we don't believe in insanity! We're not privileged, we're niggers, we don't have the privilege to go insane, and be on expensive tranquilizers, and have some stupid shrink stand over us, and tell us why we want to fuck our mother.
I don't want to be shot through the hip like that.
You don't?
I said I don't think I would like that.
Of course you wouldn't like that. Thank you sister. Did you hear the, the black comrade say, that sister say? What'd she say?
Says like we've taken up your time.
Uh-uh, we don't. We can get some rest. No, we have to deal with this shit every night, boy, you're going, we can't let this get by. You just go and do an act like this and take up our time, shit, we just patch over it like some little sick person. We don't believe in sickness, China's proved that mental illness doesn't exist. All the mental cases were let out, as I told you, and the captain says, well, they wouldn't work, and they were all shitting on themselves, and rubbing shit on themselves and each other, and they said, well, now, if that's the case, you're not going to give any benefit to the revolution, we're going to shoot you, and all of them went to work that day. You too! If you thought you didn't have an easy way out, if you thought you were going to have to suffer, you've been playing with our mercy. Talk! Let's take it as collective, I'll crush you unless you come out of this goddamn game. I'll crumble you in the ground and make you a nigger, just like us. Only you will be a little bit worse shape, because we're strong. Answer some of these questions, sir.
Yes, I just, uh, I don't like the structure, and...
I don't give a fuck what you don't like. I'm tired of hearing what you don't like. I want to hear what you're going to do about things in your miserable goddamn self. I don't give a fuck. Do you want to leave tonight? Would you like to go tonight? How would you like to leave tonight? Just say you would like to, we got a path we'll send you through. Any path you want to take. Do you want to leave tonight?
No.
Miserable goddamn persons, look at these people that you're draining dry. If you don't have any compassion on me, I've lost my mother, goddamn you, and... You miserable, selfish, and a son of a bitch. Nothing, Chris, and less, and I'll give you more, anymore, you're going to walk, you're going to stay awake for 24 hours, you're going to be crazy, goddamn. So I think of his insanity, don't believe in his shit. My son just died, one of my black sons, was shot for the light of you. What did I just say to you prick, you better talk hestle the night, because I've dealt with your insanity the last fucking time. I don't give a shit what you do. Now you can commit suicide, and come back like a goddamn fish worm, and let fish eat you. See if I give a goddamn. You better get your ass together, tonight. This miserable prick.
I have a social consciousness.
Why are you going to have a social consciousness?
So I can help, uh...
Because you're scared to death. That's alright, I don't give a shit, I want you all not on the floor. Do you hear me? Twice you tried this shit.
Yeah, too, because they brought him up there, he was acting all goofy and shit, and brought him up there.
He acts goofy, how would I like to stand in the sun all day? You'd be goofy. You want us to make you goofy tonight? You miserable prick, all these black people have no right to be goofy, they can't go goofy. They're not permitted, from the time they're born, to think enough of themselves to go goofy. Wouldn't dream of thinking of suicide, because they got a child, or somebody that they care about. You test me, you fuckers are making a revolutionary out of me, every day.
We got the most brilliant mind in the world, and we have to spend all the time on pricks like you, we can't even learn the teachings that we need.
And it's bad enough we have to be white, and bear the brunt of having white skin, knowing that all the suffering in the world is going on because of white motherfuckers like you, who bleed black, brown, yellow, and red people all over the world, white people, white people, motherfucker! And you were in Vietnam, motherfucker, you saw what the white man does, you saw what the white man does! You piss me off!
You be guarded night and death, and I dare you to try suicide, goddamn you, take a baton. You've made me a violent revolutionary. I despise the look of your weakness, your miserable weakness, look at these black people, look at them! You goddamn crushing scourge. You ought to have to live under fascism, I wish the fuck you could live under fascism. Picks like you ought to have to live under. Look at her and her baby since she dropped in the cotton field. Look at her, fucker! Go look at her, look at her. And see if you got a right to go to Chicago, see a right, you got a right to go to a nurse to mama. Look at her, when they didn't give her a right to drop her baby, the baby had to die. Look at her, and you keep looking at her, and for 10 fucking minutes you look at her, you sit down and rest your body, and you look at her, and don't you take your fucking white eyes off of her.
He told...
Look at her, you watch it.
He told Penny and I that he'd like to go back to the States and get his job back, and the job he had was working for a multimillion dollar corporation as a security guard, so that he could protect them from any poor person that would try to break in there. And today I said, don't you care about the people, don't you care about someone else? If you attempt suicide, you're going to hurt this cause, and you're going to hurt Jim. I said, don't you care? He said, evidently not.
Speak, sir, give us a, give us a lecture.
Oh, Penny says, it's true, I...
You tell us about yourself, but you tell us how you feel now.
I mean, I've come to realize since I was over here, when I was in the States, uh, you know, as long as I was able to, like, uh, devote part-time to the church, and go on to do my thing with the rest of the time.
See, all you people in your liberal psychiatric shit, and your bullshit intellectualism, all you intellectuals, listen, he's talking rational, in every way opposite of what modern psychiatry would say to do. Say lay on a couch, and we'll get some truth, uh-uh, you don't get no truth on the couch. Go ahead.
Was never sure, just where I was at, I mean, if I looked, felt, you know, I was caught up in what I'd been born in, the capitalist desires and stuff around me, you know, good food, and...
Do you realize how many people are paying for that, so-called good food? Think about the Steve Bickers that were naked and brutalized every day, and now eating his family. You think about the millions that were killed over in Vietnam, what about all those millions? Damn families, they... What did you do in Vietnam? Play checkers? What did you do over in Vietnam? You didn't get to see how the mess then, the orders, you knew something about the orders? Throw a hand grenade in every house, because they were colored? Level every city to save them from communism, kill the people, in order so they wouldn't be allowed to be free and be communist? You saw all the television pictures, didn't you? The poor Vietnamese coming out, burned half alive, and they'd still throw more, or shooting more flamethrower, whatever their goddamn weapons, their personnel, anti-personnel weapons were? You surely knew the stories. Bombing whole cities, killing every last person?
That was the original reason, I was attracted to the temple, and I...
Why don't you keep in mind that? Do you really want to eat the blood of your human brothers and sisters? There's whites that have suffered under this terrible, terrible oppression too. White Virginia miners that look a lot like you, you look like a Virginian. They die at an average age of 45, silicosis in the blood in their lungs, spitting out their lungs because of some white fucking capitalists that you're going to be a security guard to protect? Would you have shot one of those white Virginia miners coming in to get some money for bread for his family? Would you have shot the black man that would have come through, that rich capitalist you were going to protect?
One night when I was on my job there, the three men were broke into a truck, and I could see, I mean, we weren't too, the place wasn't too far from Hunter's Point, so I, I beat my horn and everything, you know. And they made a lot of noise, so that, you know, they know that I'd seen them before I called.
You've got a lot of goodness in you, why don't you encourage that goodness, son? What the fuck do you want from that system? Don't you feel much more guilty than you do upset because you don't have it? Walking around in that goddamn society that kills people like Chris, just because they're trying to help other black people? He was killed, he was assassinated this time, because he was trying to do what was right. Does it bother you?
I, I knew, I mean, because I had all these capitalistic urges within me.
So you have these urges, shit, you said you were conditioned. Think about them, why don't you follow them through?
I just knew the first few months I'd been over here, I'd go through this real conflict within myself.
Well, how many more have?
When the, I mean, I made the choice to come over here, and...
After what, you finish a McDonald's hamburger, what the hell different do you feel than eating a cutlass meat?
Uh, it's true.
You don't get as cold here. You don't have to worry about somebody stabbing you, you'd never come into this raft, but you've come in a time of desperation. You'd never come under this wrath, but you've come in a time of desperation. You heap more pain on us. Is it not enough that we lost a hell of a faith? And my mom and then I lose a son? I fought him through court battles. If I'd have been there, all the guilt, conflict in my mind, how I could have saved him again, no doubt. But he wouldn't stay here where I could have saved him. All that pain and then you put more pain on me? How do you think I'd have felt going out there because you're another one of my family? If I had found you wounded or dead?
Sorry, gentlemen, just really selfish of me.
It's true.
I'll make it up to you, work as hard as I can.
If you did that, you'd get in the line of work that you could do and like. So you don't have to be in a structure tighter than a cage. It's this kind of shit that keeps you there. You're almost ready to get out and then you do this kind of shit. Keep your word and see. Keep your word. Because we are loving, it's a love, it's a rage of love, fury. It's hurt, it's pain that causes all this. And then it's a second thing, more important. You couldn't dare let this kind of thing get by. If we didn't, all society would break down. Every indulgent act would be endorsed. You understand that?
Yeah, some, I'm glad when karate crew first started, I got beat up by Ben Sebastian. I had the feeling, you know, maybe some black people gone through it at the hands of the police.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, like you said, one time we looked like a chingang. That's, I tried, you know, understanding experience.
Son, you're not ever going to get over feeling that you don't like pain and work and that not every kind of work's going to appeal to you. Life's not going to appeal to you. Let's just think that we have a blessing, that there's several hundred of us and we can make a hell of a noise for socialism. We can make a hell of a noise. If they come, we can do a fucking good, a lot of good. And if they want to keep pushing us, we can do it here, we can do it over in the United States. Nobody says you're going to have to like everything you do, but look at the...